Okay, so we'll call the property meeting to order. I've got 6:05 on, what is it, April 24th?
April 24th.
Okay, first order of business is to approve the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Two more seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. The only item on the agenda tonight is the disposal of the Parsons Street property. And in attendance too, we have the city planner Jessica Allen. So since the last time we met, we had the opportunity to tour the building. And we can start any discussion on that.
I was very impressed with what I saw, and I think you were too anyways. Roof, on the main roof looked pretty good. The windows in the property looked great, so much of the property looked good. Most of the brick looked pretty much intact for the most part. Floors seemed level. Great structure. Some issues of course, but I think an evaluation of that would help us understand it better. And help us with our options. There could be some issues with flooring, the floor tiles that we noticed. But I think we needed to have a discussion with the maintenance department about when the insulation was placed or replaced around the steam pipes. Because it didn't look like there was a lot of asbestos wrapping around the pipes. It looked like a more modern wrap. But I'd want to have an expert tell us a little bit more about that. So those things were very encouraging. The spaces were very nice spaces. Looked like it had high-grade internet access. I don't know if Jess, we talked a little bit about that?
I mean, the wires look like there could be something, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there's access. My only thing is, if we're looking, weighing the different options, if we're looking to maintain the building for the, for some purpose within the city, you know, we would certainly want to know about some of those things. If we're looking to dispose of the building, to me, whoever would come in is probably going to rip all that, all that out and start fresh. I mean, that's at least my experience is what people do when they're rewiring for internet use. But still, I mean, it's, it is one of those things of if somebody decided just to purchase it and go slow, well, there are a number of benefits. It's not like you have to rip out all the asbestos, you know? It's not like they're hanging asbestos or anything loose from the pipes. So I agree, it looked, it was in good shape, the roof was in good shape, the floors were level, it wasn't dirty, but that anybody who buys it is going to clearly clean it out for whatever purposes they use. So, anyway, it's a good piece, it's a nice piece of property. I hadn't walked around the back, I had driven by it many times or through it, but there's definitely, you know, the community was expressing interest in having green space, and I think we can certainly balance that out. Additionally, we're kind of just talking a little bit about whether or not we would move forward with maybe having another, well, there's been some discussion, at least in full council, about having a conversation on rezoning the property. But also, we had discussed maybe having a surveyor come out and drop a new line and reparseling the two properties. And then maybe moving forward, you know, we don't have to make a decision on the green, this green space right away, but maybe at least getting an RFP to the mayor or proposing this of America put an RFP in place if we're going to sell it for the, the building itself. Diana, what are your thoughts? I mean, do you think that, obviously, we're not going to get much community input tonight, but the best course moving forward is, again, for the city is to dispose of the property? Or do you see some use for it?
You know, I think our local nonprofit use, I'm not sure that we have a community care, the community center, the senior center didn't express interest in it. So I think those were the most immediate options that we needed to eliminate in order to move forward. I think they've been eliminated, at least for the current time. But I've been struggling with the resource. We have a huge resource here, and could we make something more of it than what we, what we have today? Something more for the community. And so I'm struggling with trying to make something more. When we signed up, ran for City Council, I was into, you know, let's create some more jobs. If there's a way to use this, utilize this building to help stimulate job growth, I'd love to see that happen. Was there an interesting article in the newspaper today? I don't know if you noticed. Eisenberg School gets $10 million gift.
No, I haven't.
UMass to put focus on entrepreneurship and new ways of being entrepreneurs and working with the social conscience, with, working with communities. There may be some opportunities there to create new, I don't know, maybe, maybe not quite an incubator space, maybe, but kind of like the model we have with the town hall, where we lease to a nonprofit, and that nonprofit runs the place, takes care of the building, pays all the expenses, the city gets a modest amount a month. I could see here the possibility, if we could link up with the right people, maybe creating a space where we could have small, I think of it as incubator space, but I'm not sure it's really incubator space, it's really more creative than that. Where you're maybe having low rent to people.
Right.
Through a nonprofit, the city would collect or lease, lease fees, just trying to think of other ways. So it's not fully thought out, but opportunities, if you look at the four spaces and you say, okay, well geez, let's say you rent four, four individual spaces on each, each of the two floors, first floor and second floor, that would give you eight spaces. Eight spaces at $500 a month would be $4,000 a month, $48,000 a year. If it became $1,000 a month, that would be $96,000 a year. That kind of money, if it were generating, could generate revenue for, for the nonprofit and for the city to maintain the building, create new, I'm thinking maybe to create new jobs. Maybe those businesses would expand, and when they expanded, they could slip over to One Ferry Street when it's ready. Here we have mill space that will probably be developed in the future. Could we start with some incubator space and get, get some businesses ready to take off? Maybe they could go to some of the existing spaces, mill spaces that we have. So I think there's something, a little more to explore. I had a conversation with Michael Dargian. I don't know if you know Michael, he's an entrepreneur from East Hampton, is doing some exciting work. I'd like to try to bring him in. I know he has contacts with, with the university. There may be some thoughts of bringing in some people from the university to come up with a plan that could help us along those lines. We sell the building, we'll get paid once. Okay. And we'll get some taxes. If we keep the building, maybe we'll get, you know, some lease income, we'll get new jobs, we'll get maybe even a partnership with a nonprofit that could be something new and exciting, a new way of, of doing, doing business. I was excited to hear Jessica, or to see Jessica's email, thank you so much.
You have a chance to look at it? I didn't have a chance to look at it, I saw your email today about exploring an option.
Exploring an option with the housing and community development?
Yeah, so DCD often holds a series of workshops on housing or economic models that communities might be interested in. And so they're holding a series of workshops, they're holding them in, one in Eastern Mass, one in Central Mass, one in Western Mass, and then there's a kickoff event in Somerville. And it's, it's focusing on this, on this model of these incubator space type of buildings as a reuse option. And there's tours of a couple of existing buildings in the eastern part of the state, I think as part of the kickoff event in Somerville. I'm going to attend the session in Holyoke. It talks a lot about possible lease agreements, what developers could do, what nonprofits would do, the different models. So I think that its idea could make sense. I think there's a lot of ways that it could go, and so that's what I'm trying to, I would like to learn at this meeting. And if it doesn't work at Parsons, maybe there's somewhere else that it could work.
When is that meeting again?
It's May 15th.
That's the one in Holyoke.
In Holyoke, nine to 12, nine AM to 12, at 100 Bigelow Street in Holyoke.
Is that the Green?
That's May 15th, at the Green, Massachusetts Green High Performance Computing Center. There also is a meeting in Somerville, which I've put in my calendar, and I hope I can make, to see, to see their, their program. It's called Artisans Asylum in Greentown Labs, at 10 Tyler Street in Somerville, May 6th, from 10:30 AM to noon on May 6th. I'm going to try to make that one. I'd love to see what other communities are doing. This is exciting, exciting material. That's why I wanted to get back on council, was to do these kinds of innovative things. And so thank you so much for sharing that.
Sure, sure. And I mean, I think, I think you're correct in that, I think one of the business models that seems to be working in East Hampton, and the businesses that, in the two years that I've been here, most of the permits that we have given out are for small businesses. We have not seen any big, large developments coming through. We've had tent permits for small downtown businesses. We've also had some permits for some, some other businesses that are outgrowing their space in the mills. And looking to, to stay in East Hampton, and either looking for a larger building in the industrial park, or looking for raw land to build a new building. So I, the perfect economic model is that you provide space for folks to exchange ideas, to do some prototypes, to do modeling, to, to figure out what works for them. Once they have their systems in place, and they're connected with the universities, and we're in the knowledge border, we have not just UMass, we have a lot of universities here, all up and down the 91 corridor. They get money, they're able to do prototypes, they're then move into bigger, in bigger spaces within the mill buildings themselves. And there's a lot of unique, fascinating, creative industrial manufacturing that's happening in the mills. It's really hidden, but there's fascinating stuff that's going on here. And once they grow big enough, the hope is that at some point, they could relocate somewhere else and stay in East Hampton. And that's, that's sort of what you want to be able to provide to the community, is the smaller space for the prototyping, and the, the engineering, and the imagination stuff to happen, but then also have that space so that somebody can move into it. And I think we're lucky that we have the mills that is providing a certain significant amount of squared footage to that type of work. Where it gets a little bit tricky in East Hampton is we don't have a ton of industrial land, and we don't have, we don't have very many Parsons left that are available and vacant for new buildings. And that's where, that's where I think it's a challenge for us, as a city, in terms of that bigger economic model. I, I love the idea of there being a space, knowing that there's creative manufacturing happening here, that we would, could potentially provide space for people to exchange ideas, and to be able to work together, and to come up with some innovative products that could be, continue to be made in East Hampton. Couple of things I would just sort of note is, you know, the town hall is a great model, but there's not a lot of investment going into that building to bring it up. So it's not like we're, we're not putting money into it. The city's not putting money into it. They're collecting rents, but, and they're using that money now, they're, they're now just starting to be able to do maintenance and facilities upgrades on that building.
I wasn't looking at that as, as, I was looking at it as a conceptual model.
Right.
A framework, not necessarily the, the innards of, of the, because I think, I think Parsons Street may offer more opportunity for, for income.
I don't know, I actually, I have a developer, I had an appointment with him today, but, but he, he had to, he had to cancel. So we're, we're going to try to meet next week, and he's a, he's a contractor, he's a developer, he's done, he's, he's one of the mill owners in town, he's been doing extensive renovations on this building. We're going to do a walkthrough, and I'm going to get his construction eye on, you know, what does he think it would take to bring this building back to life? And the other thing that I'm, you know, a couple of points I'm looking for, what does he think it would take to bring it back to life? How much would he be willing to pay for it, just ballpark? And in terms of that parcel line, if we're considering splitting that parcel, how much space would he want behind that building to either add on to it? You know, I, I think we have to be careful about making that parcel too small, so that the only thing you can do is in that building, and that's it. You can't do any additions to it. So that's the other thing I want to just pick his brain about. And I'm happy to report back to the committee once I have that meeting with him about just sort of his, you know, just a quick walkthrough, what his first glance of maybe challenges for us or opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we've kind of raised a couple of these questions before too, about the viability of using it or retaining it and renting it out. Does anyone know what the, what space costs at One Cottage Street or in the mills? I mean, there's a lot of, let me say, startup businesses.
I think it depends on it. I think, I think there's a sliding scale.
Because you said like $500 a month, and.
I know you're throwing out. Just throwing out numbers.
I love throwing out numbers like that too, just to play with a little bit.
Just to see if it's at all conceptual.
But if we have, you know, let's say $48,000 was, you know, one of the numbers, and last year I think it was, where we may have spent about $30,000 just to heat the place, the question, and that's at the minimum, minimum heat level, you know, what would it cost to heat it to, you know, 65, 70 degrees in those spaces for tenants? And then if it was at maximum capacity, you know, would we be losing money? Would we break even? My experience was with the Florence Learning Center over in Northampton, and again, they, an old school, old grammar, grammar school, similar spaces, if you will, similar rooms, floors, it was the old, you know, asbestos tile floors and stuff.
Florence, Florence Grammar?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Florence, it was later renamed Florence Learning. And what would they, furnace issues and all that kind of stuff, and, you know, it was just one of those things of, the city complained a number of times, it's like they just wanted to, to get rid of it. Because it was just costing them too much to, it was actually negative for a while, or they were just breaking even. And again, while, you know, the idea of incubator space, do we have enough incubator space right now with One Cottage and with the, the other mills? Now, is there affordable space within there that would be equal cost, if you will, compared to, you know, Parsons Street versus, but again, everything that Jessica's talking about too, getting somebody out, just giving us a ballpark figure of, is it worth disposing of, you know, selling for a, you know, a one-time flat fee and then tax income, revenue after that? Or does it make sense to, to put a little bit into it and try to hold on to it? But my main thing again is I'm just kind of worried about the rents, the space, and the heating of it, especially with the oil.
Well, and there's maintenance, I mean, there's ADA compliance issues there.
Right.
So at a minimum, if it's a city-owned building, at some point, we're going to need to put an elevator in there, if there's two stories. Or some ramping system for some, I mean, somebody in a wheelchair cannot get into that building right now at all. So if it's a city building, we, we need to make sure our buildings are ADA compliant.
Right.
So that would have to be part of the requirement. At Old Town Hall, there is a handicap accessible ramp, but what's prohibited the redevelopment of the second floor is, a lot of that has to do with the lack of an elevator. We can't convert that into a performance space if people in wheelchairs can't get upstairs. So that, that is on their list of things that need to happen on that building. And there's a, a new assessment that City Space just funded, that I'm going to have a meeting with the mayor and with folks from City Space in a couple of weeks to just go over the list. But that's something to think about, is that it has, it would have to be ADA compliant, or we need to bring it into complacency at some point.
Good question, so my question is this. I mean, if you look at Asheville Town Hall, Asheville Town Hall, if you look at, in Amherst, there's, there's a, a building that they're about to renovate, an old building. I thought they were going to have, put in a, a small, limited-use elevator. Limited use, enough for someone in a wheelchair to go in and use the space to get up to the next level. In Asheville Town Hall, that's what they have. How much does something like that run?
A lot of money.
Is it 50,000, 60,000?
I think it's more, I think it's like $300,000. I don't, I mean, I don't know. I'm finding it out there.
We need, we need, we need.
I can ask that a question.
Yeah, we need to find out.
I can ask that question to the developer.
That's something, yeah, that.
But elevators are not cheap.
Full elevators are not cheap.
And then you also.
This was, all this was, was, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a half box. It's, it's not enclosed.
I don't want something in a wheelchair.
No, 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 I'm saying, if Asheville can do it, you know?
I've seen.
I've had a grandmother in a wheelchair, I'd like to, I'd like to.
I have friends who are in wheelchairs. I was with them this Saturday, we carried her, the wheelchair up the stairs at the Pulaski Club.
Yeah.
Okay, this past weekend. So I, I, I want to have something that's safe and good.
Right.
And provide good access.
Right.
Okay? But it doesn't have to be expensive.
Well, that's a question.
We need to find out what it is.
I was going to say, I've seen those half elevators kind of used for stages, or again, over at the Florence Grammar School, they had, they didn't have an access to the one floor from one of the main entrances, but if you let somebody in through, let's say, the auditorium door, they could then go through the auditorium, and in the auditorium, there was a, a four or five-foot lift that would bring them up to the first floor. So I've seen some of those smaller half, half models, but to go up to a full second floor.
I would, I would hope it's not, it's not $300,000 for those models.
I don't think they are, but we're also not talking about just one, you know, eight-foot or seven-foot lift, we're talking about.
A full story.
Yeah, 12-foot.
And I don't know if something like that would meet building code.
Right.
If it's going up that high. I have, I don't know. Those are all very good questions.
The other, another thing for us to consider is, I think state law requires us to do an appraisal of property before we sell. That's my reading of, of, of the law, and I don't know where the mayor is in regard to doing an appraisal, if she's done one.
My knowledge is not that one's done.
Or if there's another angle, that we don't have to do an appraisal. We certainly could sell for the assessed value. I don't think anyone's going to pay a million one for the entire parcel, even if we break it up, with the respective parts, I don't think. So I, I think we need to look, look at that as a question for either the mayor or for
And Jessica, your contractor, do you have a general idea of timeline when he's going to come back out?
We're going to try to reschedule something for next week, either Monday or Tuesday. We're going to check and schedule. It would be first thing in the morning, I think, is what we're trying to aim for.
I'd like, if we could, to invite Michael Dargian to take a look. I don't know if you know, you know Mike?
I do know him.
To come and take a look, if he would be willing to. I have the sense that he would, so maybe we can coordinate on access in some way, if there's an extra queue.
I don't know, I don't know, I have no idea.
If we could, I'm not sure.
I mean, I'm happy to give, I'm happy to give tours at any time, you know, so if.
If you needed to be there, or you don't.
Right.
Show a lot of property.
I'd rather, actually, I'd almost rather do it individually, I don't know.
Yeah.
It sounds a little weird, but I don't, almost wouldn't want them influencing each other.
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I think you're right. I think it would be good not to have that interaction.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, I'm happy to give him a tour, he just needs to contact me directly, get his
So that's exciting. We talked about working on our surveyor to drop the line, and I'm, I'm beginning to have other thoughts about that at this point. And I'm glad Jessica's here, because I studied very hard the Community Preservation Act, and the MGL, MGL 44, section 63, which Melissa was talking about the other day, that we had to use the proceed, we were trying to find a way to, to do something with the park.
Right.
And Melissa kept saying that we can't use the proceeds from the sale to fund a park, to fund the development of the park, or.
Anything, obviously.
Anything other than a bondable project?
It has to be used for capital expenditure.
Has to be used for capital expenditure.
Right, that money.
That was her, that's my sense, okay. So that's one angle, but that doesn't prohibit us, I think, from using CPA funds to develop the park.
CPA funds, but CPA likes a match. They don't like to fully fund a project. They, my, to my knowledge, they've never fully funded a project. They've always required at least some level of match. Now, whether they would entertain the idea of in-kind match, if it was a community design project, I don't know. But they're going to want, they're, they're not too keen on funding meaningful projects. So we would either need to find grant money, which there certainly is grant money available for the development of new parks, but again, this goes back to the maintenance issue. I don't think Parks and Rec is interested in taking on another park. You'd have to ask John Mason directly. But it's now taking on the boardwalk, and to ask him to take on another one, I'm not sure of. So whether it's, we figure out a way that it's under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, who does not have a very strong stewardship program at this point, we're working on that, we're trying to develop something so that we can better steward the properties that they currently own. But I think that's a, that's a very serious question, and I think you would need to have a conversation with John Mason. And, and quite frankly, he has the playground out front that has minimal maintenance that they put into it right now. In front of the, to the side, there's that little tiny tot lot.
Okay, sure.
So that tot lot is under the Parks and Rec jurisdiction. They don't really do much there, except for empty the trash, and it's vandalized a little bit, and, you know, it's not very robust. So, you know, there is, we have examples in town, the rail trail is maintained by a volunteer corps and a committee.
I was just going to say, maybe the community needs to step up if you want to have a park there.
Well, and, and that's sort of, I mean, my, and you know this, my take is that, you know, given what happens with the Parsons Village project, it seems to me that there is at least some good neighborhood energy that would revolve around a community design project. My only concern is that a lot of that neighborhood, a high percentage of that neighborhood is renters. And so what we need is people who have roots there, that are homeowners, that are not going to abandon it and, and leave. And then there's nobody who's maintaining it, because that would be the worst thing that could happen, is we put a lot of time and energy and grassroots energy into designing something that the neighborhood doesn't pick up and continue to maintain over the long term. Maybe they would maintain it for five years, but what happens in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? So that's, you know, there would have to be some thought about what, if it's a community neighborhood maintenance project, how is that framed? And how is that level of responsibility discussed or negotiated or set in paper somewhere so that 20 years from now, when people have moved, there's still some, do you know what I'm saying? Do you see where I'm getting at?
Oh, I, I, there's, there's a downside to it.
Yeah.
We want to be sure we were not going to experience, we were going to experience the positive side, upside.
Right.
And how do you, how do you maintain that, or almost guarantee it? If we, if we had that lease model and it generated some income, that we could generate money to take care of the building and the park at the same time, maybe.
My opinion is if you bring people in, and I think this is true with any planning, if you bring people in at the inception of a project, if you bring them in from the very beginning to design it, to help build it, then they have a more invested interest, a more emotional connection to it. And if it becomes a beloved place in the neighborhood, then people will maintain it, if it's beloved. If it's not beloved, and it's designed for you, and there isn't a connection with the space, if people don't feel emotional to it, they don't want to spend time there, then it's not going to be maintained. So I think the, how it's designed will actually impact how well it's maintained, but that's, that's the landscape architect, you know? Design it well, make it a place that people want to be, they want to gather, they want to meet their neighbors, there's a higher chance that it'll be maintained at a, at a higher level than something that's just sort of thrown together.
Makes sense.
That's my perspective, just on landscape architects.
Excellent.
No disagreeing.
But, but it would be a chance that we would have to take, you know? So if the city is willing to risk that.
So I don't know, just to back up for a second.
Sure.
JP, you were just saying that you're hesitant to drop a new line? So you want to keep it a small property and then?
I wasn't sure we, we had access to CPA funds without acquisition. I was told that we couldn't use CPA funds on an existing city parcel. If we own the parcel already.
We're using it here on the boardwalk, we own that. It's not an existing park, we're making it a new park.
It's not an existing park, we're making it a new park.
The CPA legislation changed recently where it was, you could make new parks, but you couldn't renovate an existing park. But that is now changed.
Well, you can renovate an existing park.
Now you can. You couldn't do that until about 18 months ago.
Okay.
So that recently. So that recently changed, but you can create a new park. You've always been able to do that.
I have heard what JP was saying though, too, where we might have to almost like sell the property and then have somebody sell it back to the city for a dollar or something like that, you know, it just.
That's, that's, that's what I was, if we needed to, we could do a, right, an option to purchase.
I don't think we need to. I, I mean, I can look into it again, I'll have Jamie look into it, but, um, my sense is that's not what we're doing with the boardwalk.
No, I.
You know, the boardwalk is city, it's city property. We're putting a new park on there. And we're, we had a grant and we have matched, we have CPA funds that's matching the cost of the project and building a new park on city-owned land.
It's creating a new park, yes.
It's creating a new park.
And that, and that's the intent of the legislation, is to create, take space that isn't used in this, in the way it's intent, to be, which we will create. Create it, spend the money, create it and use it.
And then use it.
Right.
And then the question is, how do you maintain it?
So dropping the line, I think we need to clarify that. If, if we needed to have the option to purchase, sell it and have the option to purchase, then we could pay for the dropping of the line with the acquisition cost of a dollar, do the survey, all of that could be paid for with CPA funds.
And if they were willing again to.
If, if they were, if, if, if that's something that made sense. If it doesn't make sense, then maybe it doesn't make sense to have a park. I, I do. If we don't need this space in this dense neighborhood, this open space.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of.
I think there's a strong argument for that, though, because it's very dense and it's like, like.
There's a lack of parks in that neighborhood.
Yeah, right.
The open space plan has data that shows that. There's, you know, it's one of two neighborhoods in the whole city where you can't walk to, most of the general, you know, if you dropped a center point in the middle of New City, most of the residents can't walk to a park within a half mile. You should be able to walk to some, some green space within a half mile of your house. That's, that's sort of the.
The landscape architect.
The landscape architecture type plan speaking in. I mean, if you could, if you could, if you could design a city from scratch, that's ultimately what you want. You wanna be able to have, be able to walk within 10 minutes or a half mile of your house to access some green space. Um, a lot of residents in New City, the closest thing that they can walk to is the bike trail. And it's over a mile. You know, Pleasant Street Green is far away. Um, walking downtown is over a half mile. So, you know, there is a, a real need for some open space, some place. And there's a lot of kids that live in that neighborhood. And that, and that playground, as you saw, is a disaster.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not really a playground.
It's not.
Yeah.
It's the shell of a playground that once was. So, um.
So then again, with the planning, it comes into play of, are we looking at, even if we sold the property, the playground, if I remember correctly, it's pretty close up to the building. So if we drop a line, that playground's probably coming down.
It stays with the existing building, it's gonna come down, right.
So then the question again is whether or not we'd be putting in a new playground or looking at more of like a community garden with a couple benches.
It could be a whole bunch of things. I think it can be more than one element. I think a well-designed space would have, would have community gardens. And I've talked to the garden committee about possibly picking up and managing new plots and they're, they're at this point, and I'm with that. Um, there's interest, I think I said this at the last meeting, on behalf of the community center, on coordinating, um, growing food for the community center at the gardens, teaching people how to grow their own food, how to cook their own food, um, you know, how do you cook a carrot, how do you cook a beet, you know, stuff like that. Um, so I think there's some innovative programming that could really happen there. Um, and the Robin at the community center, Anna's spoken with the health agent as well, and she was very excited about the idea of having community gardens in the downtown area where people can learn to grow healthy food. So I think that's a, an element, but I don't think the whole thing is being in the yard. I think there'd be way too much to maintain and to handle. Um, but I think if you had, you know, again, a gathering space, possibly a playground, um, you know, I think if we could do a design, and I can talk to the folks at UMass to see what would it cost to have a landscape architecture studio, have a, a, a class of 20 students come and do a bunch of different preliminary science, hold a community meeting, hold a couple visioning sessions, ask the people what they'd want, design it, you know, have a display of what they would like to have there, pick out our favorite elements, um, you know, they would re-present it back to the public. It's, it's a good, it's a good thing, because it's good for the students to learn how to do that, but then, you know, we also get sort of 20 designs to pick from, you know? So there's a possibility to have a, to work with them on having a studio class for about seven weeks come and do an intense design.
My only concern again, though, is just with the.
Timing.
The timing. And I'm even looking at the timing now. We've got these meetings coming up in May that you're gonna go to. Um, we'll get reconvened in June. We'll be lucky to move this forward to the full council by August, the way that things are currently progressing. And again, it's just one of those things of, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take the mayor to get, if it goes through the, the full council, and we are disposing, I'm just following that line.
Melissa had said 30 days. She thought 30 days and they could get it off the ground and almost out to bid.
But all I'm saying is, even if we, let's say we're done.
If you do July, if you do July or August, September, you could have your bids. If somebody wanted to close, they could close by October.
You don't have to design the park now either.
No, right, that's, but that's what I'm getting at though, too, is.
Get rid of the building and then deal with the back half.
Exactly.
We could do that.
That's, that's my whole thing, though, is we need to kind of move and make a decision on the building, but that does include dropping a line if we are gonna agree, of course, that we need green space and a park and other things. So it is, again, about gathering that information, some input on, well, how much space would you want? And clearly, we're not gonna put it 20 feet from the building, you know, we don't need that much park area.
Well, you also need to conform to the dimensional requirements of that zone.
Of course, but I'm just saying, it's one of those things of, there's definitely gonna be, there should be space. A developer's gonna want some space to put in an elevator or whatever.
Parking.
Yeah, parking.
Which is gonna be required in that neighborhood, so.
And then again, X, well, I guess you have the, the access down the side. You said the front of the building earlier, the part, the playground was in the front. And I never look at the building that way, I always think of it the other way. But it would be, the, the bus loop is kind of like in the back, so that's the front.
That's the back.
That's the front, that's what Jessica said earlier.
No, 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 the, the front of the building, there's a top lot.
There's a what?
There's a, a small.
Little top lot, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So across from the dance studio, there's a dance studio, so right across from there, there's a tiny, small little swing set and a couple little bouncy things.
I never saw that. We, my daughter went to the, the dance studio right across the street, but I've never noticed the little top lot.
So right, yeah, so. So that's, that's what's owned by Parsons and Rec.
All right.
Yep.
Maybe the city engineer has the capacity to estimate a certain number of feet from the road in the loop area. And we could, I'm not sure, there has to be a survey before you go out to bid.
Well, you, you do wanna have, you wanna have it say, you want the RFP to say, it's this many acres.
Absolutely, right, but the city engineer could, might have, have the capacity to tell us that.
To tell you what?
I know in North Hampton, they have the capacity, they had the capacity.
The outside of that engineering department.
Yeah, they, they had, they had the capacity to go, they not, not do stamped surveys, but everything else but the stamp. Uh, so they could have the design and know, it's, it's 150 feet from Lincoln, uh, on the south side, 150 feet on the north.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Drop the line here in this direction.
I don't know if Jim knows that, but you can certainly ask Joe Pev.
We could find, we could find out.
You could ask Joe Pev.
But I think, so I, I think if we're gonna push the sale, we should be pushing the appraisal.
Mm-hmm.
And the appraiser's gonna say, well, what's the zoning? So we're gonna probably have to go back and say, well, it could be NV, uh, could be something, something, the existing zoning.
Well, that's why I'm saying August. I mean, ordinance, if it eventually goes to ordinance and planning, I don't see the, I don't anticipate much resistance on changing the zoning to neighborhood business. But still, that's gonna take two months.
But we need to know where that line is.
Right.
So I think what, I don't know if you can do this ahead of really making a decision, but can you get, can you ask to have an appraisal done now? Or does the appraiser?
The mayor has to do that.
But does the, I guess my question is, does the appraiser need to know where the, where the line is? The lot line's gonna be, they're gonna wanna know.
Right, sure, they're gonna, they're gonna have to have an idea, an idea exactly where the lot line.
So the first step that we need to do is figure out the back property line. That's our, that's the first, that, nothing can happen until that happens, right?
Mm-hmm. And again, there has to be an agreement that we're going to drop a new line, so.
So I think, I don't know if you wanna vote on this now, but I mean, at some, at some point, council needs to make a decision if they're gonna split the lot or not. So that's actually really number one. And if they split the lot, is, do you want to proceed with an open space park project in the very near future for that back parcel?
Well, as I say, it's.
I mean, I don't know how you wanna make these decisions.
Right, I mean, I'm fine moving forward with, and not tonight, though, moving forward with voting to split the lot, but again, a lot of that's going to depend on, let's say, even some input from potential investors or a contractor who's going to recommend that, yeah, there should at least be an additional 50 feet off the back of this property, 80 feet off the back of this property to do X, Y, put it, to put in parking spaces, to put in.
What are, I think, the first, I have to figure out what the parking requirements are.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, the parking requirements are based on the use. So, you know, it's gonna differ depending if it's a retail space versus it's a residential space. And maybe what I can do is I can, I think if I can figure out.
So I'm saying, I don't think we'd have to overthink it at this point, in that sense of how many parking spaces.
Well, if the parking has to be in the back.
It's gonna have to be in the back.
Then, then you kinda have to know, because you have to know how much, how many, how many spaces you need, how much space you need for how many spaces, and how much space would you need for an elevator? And what, how much kind of do you leave for, for the future development? And I think the first step is the parking spaces.
And so I can sort of, um.
Otherwise, if you could just go in the front, it'd be great.
Um.
Oh, jeez, look who's here.
Hi, sorry I'm here so late, I just got hung up at the factory. Hi, I'm Michael Garzian.
Hi, Nathan Ziegler.
Nathan, nice to meet you, how are you?
Hi, Michael, how are you, nice to see you.
Hi, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Jessica.
Jessica, how you doing?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Um, so yeah, I mean, I think that we've got in our, in our zoning.
J, I, A, N.
So in the zoning, we know, we have a standard size for our parking space. So we can, if we know, you know, if it's residential, and if we know what the general square footage of the building and we sort of arbitrarily say each apartment is gonna be 1,000 square feet or 900 square feet or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
We could potentially figure out.
The residential portion.
Maybe, yes.
Okay.
And the retail, I think we could also sort of do the same thing. So we could, you know, maybe come up with an arbitrary number of how many parking spaces are gonna probably be required back there, based on different use types. And then from there, figure out how much space we're actually going to need. So less traveling between, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we might be able to give you some very preliminary numbers downstairs, but it's not gonna be anything set in stone. But it'll at least help maybe guide the discussion.
How, how, how far to drop the line?
Right.
Yeah.
And then I would give it an extra buck just in case.
Right.
You know, just to be safe, so.
But that's what I'm, I'm suggesting, though, is we need to come up with an idea of where to drop the line, an agreement then to move forward, you know, a vote to separate the property or re-divide the property, then to have it surveyed, and at that point, then we could get the appraisal.
Which I'd be happy to maybe move on shortly. Not tonight, but in the near future, provided it didn't impact any of the future CPA funding for the site. I'm not sure of that. Maybe Jessica can help us with that.
Sure.
I was reading the Property Tax Bureau informational guideline release. I'll give you a copy. Which may be out of date, but that's currently on their website. Doesn't talk about renovation, it talks, that just speaks to acquiring. So maybe there's a different section that is further down.
What year was this, December 2000?
Yeah, that was the original law. That was the most updated version on the current website.
You could go to.
For the CPA, and where the.
There's a new CPA law that was.
Right.
About a year and a half.
I would presume their website had the most recent information. Presume not, you're right, absolutely. Anyway. Michael, thank you so much for visiting us.
You're welcome, I'm sorry I'm late, so, you know, you probably.
We, we talked, I, I tried to talk about, with Nathan and Jessica, some of the ideas of having a collaborative effort to utilize the Parsons Street school or to maybe utilize, if it's not Parsons Street, maybe another one of the properties that might, that the city owns that might become available at some point. In a creative sort of way to generate income, to generate jobs, to generate new ways of, maybe, maybe we need new ways of, of, of new relationships to make that happen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, new ways of thinking, uh, to step outside of the box. And we talked about having that incubator space flow up the line and do industrial stay somewhere.
Yeah.
And all of that. And, and so we talked about that, and I'd love you, if you could go and look at the school at some point.
Sure, I'd love to go over there and see it. And, and my, and is this the whole property committee now?
This, this is the property committee, we're missing one member, Jessica's the city planner, so she's very much involved with that. Uh, we're short tonight, I think it's because it's a Thursday night meeting.
Yes.
The mayor's not with us tonight.
Well, it's more about planting seeds, though, it's more about recognizing that things aren't working. I mean, it, it's just, the, the system isn't working properly, there, you know, there are, not only are the poor getting poorer and the, the former middle class becoming poor, cities are now strapped for money and that, there's a reason for that. And the reason is that the money's all accumulated in one corner of our economic system and controlled by very few people. So you're gonna have to be more entrepreneurial in some way, or you're gonna have a tax situation that isn't gonna be acceptable to the community. You can only push them so far. So the question is, to me, how do you create structures so that communities, which is cities and towns, representing the common good, can participate in wealth acquisition? So they don't have to go begging, and so they don't have to, uh, um, hope that the tax income is gonna be enough, or the state's gonna kick back enough money into towns and cities for them to survive. You have to, I think, be more entrepreneurial than that. And opening the discussion about it is just as important, I think, as doing certain things. And it may be that maybe the Parsons School isn't the first step for the moment, but, uh, and we could certainly talk about it, but we certainly know that, that the hydro electrics, by establishing some water power on the manhand with the stop and shop, that can produce the city some significant, more than the, than the, than the property tax that they're gonna be paying, which I believe is about $47,000 a year. But that facility down there could produce $75,000 a year of income. And as you do things like that, you begin to empower the city. And my, my.